We're up and going, well, a brand-new month. July the 1st, 2024?
Halfway.
Halfway, is that halfway in the middle of the year? I know, so, good. So, welcome to the regular city council meeting for July 1st, 2024. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy, Absitt, Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here, thank you all. Hi, Emily.
Hello.
Hello. Don't smile. Is Alicia's not here, Alicia's, so Ewing isn't here. So, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, let's rise.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' requests? I thought the young lady was filling one out. Is Julie? Would you like to come and give us your comments? Are you Julie Holt?
Yes, I am.
Holt. Wait, why don't you come on up to the microphone and you're going to talk about the 3H Energy?
Yes.
Why don't you go to the microphone here, I'd like to talk to you.
Aren't you going to talk about Black Hills Energy?
Oh, Black Hills, okay, it looks like 13H, I'm sorry, I figured that's Black Hills. Would you like to comment on that? Because we are going to talk about it later on in the meeting, that is the subject of this meeting.
Yeah, well, that's when I might care to comment.
Okay. So, you just want to wait?
Yes, I do have some comments on Black Hills.
Would you like to give the comments now?
No, thank you.
You would?
Well, I'd rather hear what is said.
Okay.
Or, for God's sake.
All right. Anybody else, is that okay with council?
Sure.
Sure. All right. Any, invite any, I sound like the president. Go ahead, any council members would like to offer any comments or anything? Oh, sorry, John. You lit up.
Wednesday is KRLN. I will not be able to attend, I won't be able to show up for that. So, if somebody wants to, that would be fine. If not, I probably need to let Tate Jeffords know that we won't be there. Anybody think they might?
Is it, what time is that?
It's at 8:30, Wednesday, after tomorrow.
Anybody else want to do it? I could do it. I don't know if I'm that interesting to talk to, but I would.
The, oh, you and Tate can chew the fat for a while.
Oh, I'm on a low-carb diet, so, okay, yeah, I'll show up.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Good.
Okay? Anybody else?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Are you taking announcements at this point?
Sure.
Okay. A couple of things I was going to mention. The July 10th General Government Committee meeting, as we know, but I thought it'd be helpful to mention to the public also, we're going to have an update from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and from the Federal Environmental Protection Agency regarding where we are in the superfund process at the Cotter former uranium mill site. And I believe several staff from each of those agencies will be attending in person. And I also wanted to mention that there is, we had last week the second public meeting regarding the pool, swimming pool feasibility study. And there is another survey open now online for, I think, about a couple of weeks till about the middle of July. So, we encourage folks to take a look. You can find a link to not only that survey, but also a lot of information about the options that were presented at the public meeting. You can find that by going to the Canyon City Recreation District Facebook page and then linking from there. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Amy.
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. I have the pleasure of serving as city council's liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. And one of the efforts that they are currently undertaking is the development of guidelines for our historic downtown. And they're very interested in ensuring that they have public engagement and involvement in that process. So, I just wanted to let folks know that the next meeting where they will be discussing that will be July 24th at 2:30. So, if anyone is interested in.
Where, here?
Either here or at the library, still TBD based on room availability. Sorry, not the library, the museum.
You haven't preserved the location, or reserved the location?
I am not responsible for reserving the location.
I'm just joking, of course, preserve, get it, never mind. Okay. Any other council members? All right, unless the city administrator to review the agenda and the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the city council meeting on June 17th and the special meetings on June 17th, which was an executive session, and June 18th, which was CML. 7B authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Osprey, for Osprey Court erosion repairs. 7C authorizes the city administrator to sign a service agreement for professional services for the co-responder program with Debbie Thomas and an amount not to exceed, and it's a typo in the packet, not to exceed $23,125. 7D authorizes the purchase of radios and spare batteries for police department from Motorola and an amount not to exceed $34,000. And 7E is to receive and file cash dispersments for June 18th through July 1st.
Thank you, Ryan. Any additions or corrections? Oh, Amy.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a bit confused. I had asked earlier today if that was a typo, and you had noted that given that the state fiscal year is different than ours, that we were only approving it for 22.5. Is that, could you walk me through?
We're approving the contract, which is for both. The contract is not to exceed and the contract spans both fiscal years.
But the previous fiscal year for the state has already concluded. So, we're signing a professional services agreement for work that's already been done, and the state doesn't have an issue with that? Given that it's their grant funding?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. Chief, do you have any?
As regards to 23, 24 expenditures?
23, 24 expenditures.
So, to your question, Councilwoman Schmisher, I just spoke with Deb, Ms. Thomas, before I came up this afternoon to ensure that we didn't incur any expenses before the contract was signed. So, we had talked about doing some work before the contract was signed, but when we spoke with the attorneys who did not favor work being done before the contract was signed, she stopped working. And there's, there's no bill to incur. So, she's, there's no expenses for that time period.
So, then it will be $22,500?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, I really appreciate it.
Emily.
Clear as mud, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Emily?
Absolutely.
Emily?
Yeah, I just had a question on digital, page 37, so item D, there's mention in there about how that item is not subject, subject to bid. I just thought it'd be helpful to hear a little bit more and for the public to hear a little more about why that is.
That's on the police batteries.
That is through a state bid process, so it's already been bid out through, through a bidding process. It has not been bid through the city, but through another cooperative purchasing program, which is allowed by city's purchasing policy.
Right, so it's, I don't have the page up in front of me right at the moment, but it's not the typical state bid, but it's another cooperative bid, is that?
Correct.
What I'm understa, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else? Any other additions or corrections? Looks like everybody's smiling, I guess not. Then could I have a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda?
I approve that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Hold on a second.
Kathy? Any comments on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney.
Aye.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Go ahead, Amy, you have a.
Sorry, I just realized that I think we'll need to amend the professional services contract that's attached to 7C because it still states 23,250, or whatever it is. 23,125, and references a payment for state fiscal year 2024 in 3A. Apologies, I did not.
Okay.
Catch that with the back and forth earlier.
May be a question for the attorney, but since we haven't incurred any expenses for that.
Yeah, I mean, it is a not to exceed number, so I actually don't think you need to amend it because we're not going to spend the 625.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, could we invite the city administrator for a report? And by the way, welcome back, you have that smile, we had to massage your face to stop you from smiling, but welcome back.
It is my first day back, I don't have very much to report as far as the administrative report goes, happy to be back.
Good.
It's good to see everybody.
Happy to have you back, thank you, Ryan.
I do believe our city attorney may have some updates, though, regarding a recent Supreme Court ruling.
Okay, Mr. Court?
Yeah, I am, I think, pleased to report that on Friday, the United States Supreme Court issued a decision in a case called City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson et al. It overturned a decision that said you could not have a camping ban unless you had shelter space. Previously, the courts had found that it was cruel and unusual punishment to punish someone who was experiencing homelessness in, in the form of a camping ban. The court said no, that it's not cruel and unusual punishment, and that it is not a, what's known as a status offense, because you're not criminalizing homelessness, you're criminalizing sleeping on public property. So, it, we're going to have to have a lot of discussions on what that means in terms of enforcement, but it certainly eliminates a lot of impediments to enforcement that communities across the state of Colorado, including Canyon City, have had related to this issue of is there shelter space available when you are punishing camping, camping on public property? So, it's a very, very significant decision for municipalities across the country and in Colorado.
Okay. Are you, do you have a button that works?
I do, I do.
Oh, John!
So, a question on that, does, does that, are you aware of any code changes we need to make, or is this just perhaps something in policy, or?
Likely it is going to be enforcement more than, more than code changes. We're going to put a memo together because it doesn't answer all the questions. So, for example, you still can't just seize someone's property when they're camping, they still have protections related to their property. But, for example, you could immediately ticket someone for camping on public property. You don't need to determine whether there's any need for services. So, we're going to do further evaluation again, it just got released on Friday, but we don't think there'll be a necessity of ordinance revision.
Okay, thank you, Cory. Anyone else, any questions of our administrator, other than he's back and welcoming him back? So, all right, the discussion then is the, the discussion is a Black Hills Energy rate case. And Emily, would you like to come in on that? So.
Yeah, I'd love to introduce that topic. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As we know, it's been recently publicized that Black Hills Energy has filed a rate case with the State Public Utilities Commission. I'll just start out by briefly saying that six and a half years ago, I began a citizens' group in Canyon City called Canyon City's Energy Future modeled after, after a group that was already working in Pueblo in regard to their failed decision, I guess I'll say, to try to break away from their franchise with Black Hills. And there are times, and of course, the city, I won't repeat all the history with the city, but we had a vote, then a year or two after that, a vote of the citizens of Canyon City that turned down a franchise renewal. We've had a lot of discussion because the city, of course, formed a energy advisory committee that has met diligently for several years, looking in detail at how monopolies are regulated in Colorado and what alternatives there might be, or might not be, to getting more affordable power in our community. And there are times I feel as if I failed in that effort, or in times I feel that at least to date, the city has failed in that effort in achieving cheaper power for residents and for businesses. But I have to say, I don't think we're the ones failing. I really think that our monopoly provider is failing us. As you know, the proposed rate increase would go into effect March 2025 or before, depending on what the PUC does with that request. I believe Black Hills themselves has said that it would increase as proposed, the, the rate increase would really, would result in a, an increase in an average residential bill of $20 per month, that's what, whatever an average residential bill is. They have, the company has 100,000 customers roughly in Canyon City and Pueblo and other communities in several other counties. And that this, this is a significant increase on top of the fact that they already have the highest costs for electricity in the state of Colorado. I want to mention, and I know I've said before, and I'll just bring you up to date a little bit on some of the newer numbers, the Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities does a survey at least once a year, I think sometimes it's twice a year. And it's not information that's generally released to the public, but sometimes it finds its way into the hands of some of us working on the energy committee. The January 2024 survey once again shows that Black Hills Energy is the highest cost electricity in the state of Colorado. As it is now, and these are current costs, this is without having a rate increase that might go into effect next year. As it is now, the average electric bill in the Black Hills service territory is 45% higher than the average bill in the Xcel Energy territory. And it's pretty similar to that in many other parts of the state, too. I just compared to Xcel because that, there are a number of people who are served by that company. It's also worth looking at some of the other comparison that the Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities does, and that is they compare small commercial rates and costs and they compare large commercial. If you look at the large commercial category on that chart from CAMU, Black Hills average bill for a large commercial customer is a little over $7,000 a month. And for Xcel, for a large commercial customer, it's about $4,800 a month. So, there's a difference of, you know, if you look on an annual basis, it's around $27,000 or more difference in cost for a large commercial customer comparing Black Hills with Xcel Energy. And I have said over and over, and I'll say it again, having high electricity costs in a part of the state that already is high poverty, our median income much lower than other parts of the state, or even the statewide average, it is a clear barrier to economic development for us, for Pueblo, and for other communities in our part of the state. I've heard, I don't know if this is true, but I've heard kind of a rumor that Pueblo County might ask, when they object to this rate increase request, that they might ask that the PUC just take away the certificate for public convenience and necessity, which is the PUC's term for how a utility gets permission to serve a particular service territory. We'll wait and see, I don't know if Pueblo County will do that or not, or the city of Pueblo, or anyone else in the territory, but it might be something to kind of follow along, see what the other communities are going to do in regard to this request. So, I ask that this be put on the agenda so that the city could formally take steps to intervene in this rate case. I think you all know that rate cases before the PUC are very complex legal processes. To intervene, you really have to have an attorney, it's very hard for an individual to do that, or a nonprofit, sometimes they do, but it's, it's an expensive process and it's a complicated process. But I think we, as a city, owe it to our residents to intervene in this case and have a voice in what happens with this proposed increase from Black Hills. It's just so concerning to me. They know, it's not a surprise to anyone, including company management, that this is a poor part of the state. They know that their electricity costs are the highest in the state. They know that they're already going to add a rider to our bills beginning in January to pay for the renewable energy that they're going to add, their clean energy plan, that's a separate rider, it's already being planned. So, this increase that they're requesting is on, on top of all of that. And so, that's my long way of saying, I hope that we all agree that we should intervene in this case and, and see where it goes with the PUC.
Thank you, Emily. Any comments of council? Ryan, go ahead.
Before you get too deep into the discussion, I think, you know, want to try and keep it high level and any discussion, and, you know, it may be prudent to have a more detailed conversation in executive session to instruct negotiators or develop, devise a legal strategy. Now, I'll let Cory add anything to that.
Yeah, I think it may be worth adding to the 15th a more detailed discussion, but let me just give a quick idea of where we are. Because since the, what Black Hills filed was called an advice letter on June 14th of 2024 seeking the rate increase, the Office of Utility Consumer Advocate has filed a protest in the tariff proceeding and is requesting that the PUC suspend the proceeding and set it for an evidentiary hearing. We're waiting to see if the PUC rules on that, because I think that would likely change how this case is prosecuted, and so we will likely know more also by the 15th in terms of how this case may proceed forward.
And that's the 15th of July?
Yes.
And you're going to monitor that for us?
Yes.
So.
And, and for what it's worth, neither the city of Pueblo nor Pueblo County have submitted anything yet. I've not heard the rumor that, that Councilmember Tracy identified, doesn't mean that she and I probably run in different circles, so, but I have not heard that yet, but there has been a lot of noise about the fact that, at a minimum, this seems disingenuous by Black Hills at this point. And, you know, I would offer that they certainly seem tone deaf to kind of the, the income of this community and the impact of their rates on this community.
Yeah, and for my part, I would agree, I think that the town, we, I would, I don't get a vote, by the way, I'm a tie vote, I would like to put that on an, an executive session because there will be things discussed in there that, not that the public shouldn't hear, but they should need to know that we're trying to do the best we can to oppose that in several different facets. And so, that would be a consideration I would ask you all to consider. Okay? Well, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of the, one thing that I hope that we would be able to discuss or hear information about at any future proceeding would be potential costs for the city to undertake such a course of action.
Thank you, John, Amy.
Just wanted to echo the support for further conversations and the, the quick math, that's over a million dollars more coming out of our community going towards Black Hills, which is just, I mean, when you think about the fact, some of the facts that Councilwoman Tracy outlined in terms of the highest rates in the state and more than 40%, more than others, like that's a, that's a lot more money coming out of our community. So, appreciate it and looking forward to the additional conversation.
Thank you, Amy.
And if, I'll press my button again?
Goodness. Kathy?
Well, I just wanted to. Ah, darn it. I just wanted to emphasize the fact that I agree with what has been said so far. However, you know, in a sense, as far as like what John is saying, we do want to know definitely what the costs will be, but it's one of those to where I think it's a cost that we need to possibly, at least a reasonable cost to spend, because we owe it to our citizens to make sure that we do what we can to save what they have already and not have it spend more than they need to.
Okay, thank you. Andrea?
Yes, I would ask, if staff is going to put together an estimate for John, that, and I think it's a good idea, what this is going to cost us in legal fees, I think at the same time, you need to put with that, what is the city paying every year to, to Black Hills? I track it every month, and it's phenomenal. And I would posit that, you know, whatever the legal fees are, if we ever at the end of this tunnel get more affordable energy, the city is going to accrue savings, huge savings. Because it's, I don't think, we don't look at it on an annual basis, we see it every month, but we are paying 45% more than a, a city our size outside of Denver, which is just crazy. So, I think that should be part of it, not just what it's going to cost us in legal fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
We can do that.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just to point out some of the complexities involved here, it involves terminology or language. And, and the issue is your bill that you see that you get from the company every month versus the rates that you pay. If you just look at, if you narrow your look at what electric rates are, Black Hills is not that much out of line with, with, with others. The problem is, is that the rates are not the entire bill. You probably get half of, half of your bill is about rate-based in terms of electricity usage, and half of your bill is from other sources of, of income that Black Hills has been allowed by the PUC to add to our bills. So, there are two things, rates and, and electric bills, and those are different things.
Thank you, John. Emily?
Thanks, I, just to add on to what Andrea was saying, I think it's important for us to all remember that we not only pay our own individual electric bill each month for our home, but we also pay collectively, we pay the electric bills of all the other public entities. The city, as Andrea mentioned, pays a lot of money for electricity every month, but think about, we're also paying electric bills for other public entities, the school district, the county, recreation district, whatever it is. We, as individual citizens, are paying a part of those bills, each one of us, because they are public entities and our taxes go toward paying those electric bills. So, it really, it's such an important issue for our community, really take a look at what this is doing to all of us individually and collectively. And I guess I have a question whether this, whether our, whether Attorney Hoffman thinks we need any action at all tonight, or just continue this discussion next time?
I don't think there's any need for action tonight based on the fact that the Office of Utility Consumer Advocate filed what they filed, that gives us a little time. I do intend to reach out to our special counsel also. I do intend to reach out to our special counsel also to get an evaluation of how much their rates would be in this proceeding as well, so I can give you some comparison as to cost.
Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Is it, I get that we're wanting to put it on an executive meeting. Can you give us date or dates?
We will do it at the next city council meeting.
The next one?
Yeah, we'll, we'll schedule it for that.
At 5:00? All right. Is that, Corey, is that suitable?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you all. Yeah, I think Emily's point is well taken. I mean, we have, I would think, if I was running the school district, and I'm not, and I'm not even asked to run it, but anyway, I would probably want to be involved in that because they have a big bill, the fire department does, and, and the county, certainly they should be, I don't know if we have enough time to react to that, but I, we're going to meet with the city, and the city and the commissioners are going to meet together. And I think that if they haven't done it by this time, they should take a look at it. Because, yeah, we're paying a pretty hefty bill every month. I see that. So while I'm droning on, okay, well, we have for the next executive meeting, 5:00. And Corey's going to, and did you say something about pro bono, or is this going to be? I mean, I may, I may not have heard that.
I don't recall those words, no.
Okay. I'm just kidding. And thank you, Emily. So, yes, ma'am?
Don't forget to...
Oh. Would you like to comment, ma'am?
I just, I'm sorry, I just...
Come on up here so we can hear you. If not, Kyle's going to have to shout for you.
I can do that.
You don't want him to do that? Okay.
My name is Julie Holmes, and I don't live in Canyon City. I live in Lincoln Park.
Can you pull that down to you and we can hear you?
My name is Julie Holmes, and I live in Lincoln Park, so I can't vote for you folks. Wish I could vote for Emily. I feel the, the rates of Black Hills Energy, and I also feel, I've had some unfortunate dealings with them as well. Unfortunate toward me, of course. But it just, it does seem to me like if you were able to have this in an, your discussions in an open session, perhaps more people would understand that, that they are paying sometimes more than 48% higher energy costs. And I understand your concern with rates and other costs, but I, I do believe it's for an individual, it's the amount of the bill. It has nothing, it has, the rate and the entire bill is not quite as important to an individual as it is perhaps to a, a large corporation that can shop for where they buy their electricity from. And of course, that's not available here. And I, I believe that's all I had to say, except I do appreciate your time.
Sure. And I think, what usually with executive session is that we, we talk so that we'll know what roadmap that we're going to pursue.
I understand that.
And then have a discussion with the public. So we'll be well versed on it, and you'll hear about it.
Yeah.
So we appreciate you coming in.
I, I thank you.
And they probably turned your electric off, but don't worry about it.
How do you do that?
Just kidding. All right.
Well, this electricity, well, incidentally, they did try to turn my electricity off.
I'm just kidding, you know, I just, thank you. Okay, well, so, so we're going to go ahead and have an executive session this 17th? 15th? All right. Got that right. Finally, is there anything else that we'd like to talk about this time? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.